I like, uh, what, just after the election or something like that?
I know.
Before I switch to the boardwalk, because I couldn't quite figure out how to...
Calling to order the Monday, May 16th, regular meeting of the 39th Council of the City of Berkeley. Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Baker?
Here.
Mayor Protem Dean?
Here.
Councilmember Gavin?
Here.
Councilmember Henin?
Here.
Councilmember Price?
Here.
Councilmember Vilani?
Here.
Mayor Turbrack?
Here.
Our first order of business this evening is the approval of tonight's agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Price, support from Councilmember Baker. Are there any changes or additions? Or deletions? Seeing none, Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on our agenda?
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henin?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Vilani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes.
At this time, please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. With us this evening is the 2022 Citizen of the Year, Pastor Zach Dunlap.
Great to be with y'all. Thanks for all that you do. Let's pray. Good and loving God, thank you for the opportunity to live, work, worship, pray, and play in this wonderful community of Berkeley. Thank you that in this little city, schools, businesses, residential neighborhoods, churches, civic and nonprofit organizations, all work together for the greater good. We residents might not see eye to eye on everything, and that is okay. Help us to remember the strength of our diversity. Republican and Democrat, Black and White, Asian and Hispanic, Rich and Poor, LGBTQ+ and Straight, Hunters and Vegans. What unites us is greater than anything that divides us. Be with City Council as they deliberate and make decisions to move our city forward. Be with us, citizens, business owners, members of the wider community, as we together shine the light that we have access to and share the love we've experienced with the world around us. It's in the strong name of Jesus that I pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Zach, and congratulations on a very, very well-deserved honor. We now move to public comments. These are public comments for items that are not included on tonight's agenda. You will have the opportunity to speak on specific agenda items while they are being considered. Remember, Councilmembers will not engage you in discussion, but if your concern needs to be addressed by a Department of the City or a member of City staff, please sign in at the clerk's table. When you come to the microphone, please state your name and city of residence. Don't all rush up at once. There's plenty of time for everybody.
Good evening to this honorable body. Mike McGinnis, Executive Director of the Berkeley Downtown Development Authority. Wanted to thank the Council and the community for coming out to the ribbon cutting for Little Lou's Hot Chicken located on Coolidge, just north of Catalpa. Want to let the community know that they are very much open for business, so check them out. And thank you likewise for the strong showing at the May 1st Flipside Records ribbon cutting as well. We had a successful block party on Sunday, May 1st. Thank you to the community who came out, had fun, made it possible. It just shows the spirit of Berkeley. I can remember as a kid visiting my family that lived on Oxford, right behind Westbourne Market, the block party that that block on Oxford had, and that is very much the inspiration. Those Berkeley block parties are the inspiration for our downtown offerings of the same sort. So, thank you for being a part of the May 1st action. The events that are coming up, promotional events brought to you by the Berkeley Downtown Development Authority, include the next Ladies Night Out on Thursday, June 2nd, from 5:00 to 9:00. The Berkeley Pride Block Party on June 26th, and many more to come throughout the summer. You know, of course, many civic groups and the Chamber are bringing the Art Bash comes in the next few weeks as well. There's so many more dynamic celebrations in our downtown, so we encourage you to mark your calendars, take part. And thank you so much to the community for all your support of downtown Berkeley and our dynamic, unique businesses. With more to come, with more ribbon cuttings and new openings to come, it's really exciting, the continued growth and progress in our downtown. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Any other public comments? All right, seeing none, we will move to this evening's order of business. First up is our consent agenda. Ms. Mitchell, would you please read the items on tonight's consent agenda?
One, approval of the minutes. Matter of approving the minutes of the 39th Regular City Council Meeting on Monday, April 18th, 2022. Two, warrant. Matter of approving warrant number 1374. Three, proclamation number P1422. Matter proclaiming May 14th, 2022, as a praxia awareness day. Four, proclamation number P1522. Matter proclaiming May 15th through 21st as National Police Week. Five, proclamation number P1622. Matter proclaiming the first Friday in June to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day. Six, proclamation number P1722. Matter proclaiming June 2022 as LGBTQIA+ Pride Month. Seven, proclamation number P1822. Matter proclaiming June 2022 as Pet Preparedness Month. Eight, proclamation number P1922. Matter proclaiming June 2022 as Summer Safety Month.
Is there a motion to approve this evening's consent agenda?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Gavin. I'm gonna let the Mayor Protem have one, since she's been close so far this evening. Any discussion on the consent agenda?
Good evening, Mayor, and esteemed City Council members. My name is Jess. Should I do this?
Yes.
My name is Jess. My wife, Casey, and I have been residents of this community for over 15 years. We are the founders of Berkeley Cares Food Pantry on 12 Mile and have been active members of this community throughout our time here. We chose Berkeley as our home and the home of our food pantry because of its loving, welcoming, and supportive residents. We even adopted the motto "Berkeley Cares" into our pantry name. I am employed with Berkeley Schools, and I work directly with our high school students and their families. I am also on the Board of the Berkeley Moms Club and coach our daughter's softball team. She is eight years old and attends Angel Elementary. So as you can see, we are deeply intertwined in the roots of this city. When my wife and I adopted our daughter, we made the conscious decision to raise our family in this community. We did this, excuse me, with the knowledge that Berkeley was not only a tolerant city, but more importantly, a progressive and accepting one. It's important that our daughter can witness and participate in community activities and not fear prejudice from community members, school administration, or city leadership. This proclamation is in its third year, and every year, we remain grateful for the decision we made to raise our family here. We often find ourselves defending Berkeley against its old reputation, which I'm sure many of you are aware of. And such a proclamation bolsters our voices when we lift up Berkeley in conversation. Moving here and subsequently raising our small family here has proven to be one of the best decisions we've ever made. We often tell our little girl how lucky she is to live in such an amazing city, and seeing Berkeley progress with the rest of the world keeps us hopeful that she and the rest of children of LGBTQ families will be safe and as seen as the children here in Berkeley. Lastly, why this proclamation is important. For the many reasons I already listed, LGBTQ+ youth need our protection now more than ever. With cruel tactics such as conversion therapy happening right in our own backyards, under the guise of religion, and LGBTQ youth taking their own lives at an alarming rate. 50% of LGBTQ youths have suicidal ideation, while 18% of those actually make the attempt. That rate is based solely on lack of support from their community, but mostly at home. Berkeley and its residents have proven beyond a doubt that they, excuse me, that the love they have for one another here is immeasurable and a place where support can be found. I know without a doubt that Berkeley has our backs, and they should know that we have theirs. Thank you.
Thank you, Jess.
Good evening. My name is Mary Miller. I am a resident of Berkeley, and I just want to thank the Mayor and the City Council for your continued support of acknowledging Gun Violence Awareness Day, or Wear Orange Day. Gun violence is not selective. It can happen in our schools, in our grocery stores, in our churches, and to individual families like mine. On behalf of Moms Demand Action and the Every Town Survivor Network, I want to thank the City of Berkeley for being a continued partner in raising awareness and hopefully bringing an end to gun violence. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Any other comments on the consent agenda? All right, seeing none, it has been moved and seconded. Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on tonight's consent agenda?
Gavin?
Yes.
Henin?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Vilani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes.
We now move on to this evening's regular agenda. Ms. Mitchell, would you please read item number one?
Recognitions Presentations. Matter of any recognitions or presentations from the consent agenda.
So typically, we don't always read these, but we are going to read a few of them today, and especially since I knew that we had some folks that were coming in support of them. First off, I've asked Mayor Protem Dean to read P1522.
A proclamation of the Council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan, proclaiming May 15th through 21st, 2022, as National Police Week. Whereas, there are more than 800,000 law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the Berkeley Public Safety Department. And whereas, since the first recorded death in 1786, more than 23,000 law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and been killed in the line of duty. And whereas, the names of these dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington, DC. And whereas, 619 new names of fallen heroes are being added to the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial this spring, including 472 officers killed in 2021 and 147 officers killed in previous years. Now therefore, the City of Berkeley hereby proclaims Section 1, that the week of May 15th through the 21st, 2022, is hereby recognized as National Police Week in the City of Berkeley, and publicly we salute the service of law enforcement officers in our community and in communities across the nation. Proclaimed this 16th day of May, 2022, at a regular meeting of the Berkeley City Council. Daniel J. Turbrack, Mayor.
Thank you.
Welcome.
I've asked Councilmember Price to read P1622.
Yes, thank you. A proclamation of the Council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan, declaring the first Friday in June to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day. Whereas, every day, more than 100 Americans are killed by gun violence, and on average, there are more than 13,000 gun homicides every year. And whereas, Americans are 25 times more likely to die from gun homicide than people in other high-income countries. And whereas, in Michigan, we have 1,212 gun deaths every year, with a rate of 12.1 deaths per 100,000 people. Michigan has the 31st highest rate of gun deaths in the U.S. And whereas, gun homicides and assaults are concentrated in cities, with more than half of all firearm-related gun deaths in the nation occurring in 127 cities. And whereas, cities across the nation, including Berkeley, are working to end the senseless violence with evidence-based solutions. And whereas, protecting public safety in the communities they serve is the Mayor's highest responsibility. And whereas, support for the Second Amendment rights of law-abiding citizens goes hand in hand with keeping guns away from people with dangerous histories. And whereas, mayors and law enforcement officers know their communities best, are most familiar with local criminal activity and how to address it, and are best positioned to understand how to keep their citizens safe. And whereas, gun violence prevention is more important than ever, as the COVID-19 pandemic continues to exacerbate gun violence after more than a year of increased gun sales, increased calls to suicide and domestic violence hotlines, and an increase in city gun violence. And whereas, in January 2013, Hadiya Pendleton was tragically shot and killed at age 15. And on June 3rd, 2022, to recognize the 25th birthday of Hadiya Pendleton, people across the United States will recognize National Gun Violence Awareness Day and wear orange in tribute to Hadiya Pendleton and other victims of gun violence, and the loved ones of all victims. And whereas, this idea was inspired by a group of Hadiya's friends, who asked their classmates to commemorate her life by wearing orange. They chose this color because hunters wear orange to announce themselves to other hunters when out in the woods, and orange is a color that symbolizes the value of human life. And whereas, anyone can join this campaign by pledging to wear orange on June 3rd, the first Friday in June 2022, to help raise awareness about gun violence. And whereas, by wearing orange on June 3rd, 2022, Americans will raise awareness about gun violence and honor the lives of gun violence victims and survivors. Now, therefore, the Council of the City of Berkeley hereby proclaims Section 1, that the first Friday in June, June 3rd, 2022, is hereby declared to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day in the City of Berkeley. And by wearing orange on this day, citizens will help to raise awareness about gun violence and honor the lives of gun violence victims and survivors. Section 2, the City of Berkeley renews our commitment to reducing gun violence and pledges to do all we can to keep firearms out of the wrong hands and encourage responsible gun ownership to help keep our children safe. And Section 3, the City of Berkeley further encourages all citizens to support their community's efforts and renew their commitment to preventing the tragic effects of gun violence and to honor the value of human lives. Proclaimed this 16th day of May, 2022, at a regular meeting of the Berkeley City Council. Daniel J. Turbrack, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Price. And I've asked Councilmember Vilani to read P1722.
A proclamation of the Council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan, proclaiming June 2022 as LGBTQIA+ Pride Month. Whereas, the City of Berkeley strives to be an exceptional place to live, work, play, learn, grow, a business, raise a family, and... Whereas, the City of Berkeley accepts and welcomes all people of diverse backgrounds and believes a diverse population leads to a more vibrant community. And whereas, the City of Berkeley supports the rights of every citizen to experience equality and freedom from discrimination. And whereas, the City of Berkeley is dedicated to fostering acceptance of all of its residents and further preventing discrimination, harassment, and bullying based on sexual orientation, gender identity, and the expression of both facets of an individual. And whereas, while we as a society at large are slowly embracing new definitions of sexuality and gender, we must also acknowledge that the need for education and awareness remains vital to end discrimination and prejudice. And whereas, it is imperative that young people in our community, regardless of sexual orientation, gender identity, and expression, feel valued, safe, and supported by their peers and community leaders. And whereas, the City of Berkeley's lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, intersex, asexual, and non-binary identifying community members are a vital part of our overall community and contribute to making it a stronger one. Now therefore, the Council of the City of Berkeley hereby proclaims Section 1, that June 2022 shall be recognized as LGBTQIA+ Pride Month in the City of Berkeley. Section 2, the City of Berkeley urges the citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools in the City of Berkeley to recommit to increasing our support and recognition of the contributions made by the members of the LGBTQIA+ community and to actively promote the principles of equality, liberty, and justice. Proclaimed this 16th day of May, 2022, at a regular meeting of the Berkeley City Council. Daniel J. Turbrack, Mayor.
Thank you. And again, all of those proclamations were passed on this evening's consent agenda, but I felt it was important to give everybody an opportunity to hear those as well. Thank you. We now move on to item number two, please, Ms. Mitchell.
Public hearing. Matter of holding a public hearing regarding the proposed operating budget for the fiscal year 2022-23 and supporting tax rates for the City of Berkeley, Michigan.
I will open the public hearing at 7:21 PM Eastern Standard Time. Okay. Any comments for this public hearing? Operating budget for fiscal year 2022-2023 and supporting tax rates? Just in case you're gathering your thoughts, I'll give you a few more seconds. All right, and seeing no comments, I will close the public hearing at 7:22. Ms. Mitchell, would you please read item number three?
Resolution Number R622. Matter of approving a resolution of the Council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan, approving the 2022-23 through 2028-29 Capital Improvements Plan of the City of Berkeley, Michigan.
Is there a motion to approve R06202?
So moved, Your Honor.
Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Baker with support from Councilmember Vilani. Mr. Baumgartner?
Good morning, Mayor, and good evening, everyone. A little bit of background before we get into this particular agenda item. But the budget process begins around January of each year. This budget, we worked on this for about four months or so until bringing it to council, whereas council spent this year and in years past many, many hours, over two nights, reviewing each of the items in the budget and then talking about how to responsibly invest the city's resources into all sorts of different services and projects, and even the staff themselves, as we continue to make Berkeley the best place to live, bar none. This particular agenda item is the capital side of things. This is how we invest our monies in large projects. As you'll note, the time scale here goes out several years. This is done in concurrence with good accounting practices. This helps us project many, many years out, the projects and the areas where we want to improve the community. This comes to you by way of the Finance Department, represented this evening by Mr. Pollak, who joins us. He'll be able to comment on any of the four items as well, but this is the first of four items that will kick off a complete picture of how the city looks to invest nearly, I think, $30 million worth of resources over the next 12 months, starting July 1st of this year.
Right. Questions for either our Finance Director or City Manager?
Just a comment. I just wanted to thank both of you for being so accessible in the weeks leading up to our budget session, so that you were able to answer all of my questions and being so prepared for our discussion that took place. I thought that the budget this year was very well thought out. There were some difficult decisions that had to be made at all levels, and I think that they were facilitated really well. So, thank you for all of your work on it.
As Councilmember Price alluded to, and the City Manager as well, this is something the Council and Department and the Directors, I should say, have been working on since the beginning of the year, really since January. Discussed much of what we're going to discuss this evening at the budget hearings last week, as well as public sessions. And my van I hear has budget right next to us. Thank you. Thank you. I'd like to buy a bottle, please.
That's not in the budget.
Ironically enough, not this year. Any additional comments from Council on the CIP? All right, seeing none. Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on R0622?
Henin?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Vilani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes.
Now move on to item number four, please, Ms. Mitchell.
Resolution Number R722. Matter of approving a resolution of the Council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan, establishing a residential and commercial service fee for the collection and disposal of solid waste, effective July 1st, 2022.
Is there a motion to approve R0722?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilmember Henin.
Support.
Ah, support by Councilmember Gavin. Cross that off. Okay. Mr. Baumgartner?
Good morning, Mayor. This particular item is exactly what it sounds like. This is everything that we collect curbside, as well as those commercial accounts as well. We don't have a lot of them in the city, but this establishes a cost for each of those. So whether it's refuse, recycling, or even some yard waste is collected out of here, this fee helps us fund that great service that people rely on so heavily. You see, it's a resolution. It sets the actual dollars amounts themselves, as well as a table that Mr. Pollak put together as a part of Section 4.
Mr. Finance Director, anything you'd like to add?
No, just that we're... We expect the rate of inflation to be significantly higher this year, but we didn't go far beyond that in the rubbish. Just one comment is we did, we are running the fund balance down, but we did project a slight surplus in the upcoming years, so we're okay for now as far as headly override is concerned with the rubbish millage. But I'll be back to comment on other...
Save that for later. Don't bury the lead here, okay? Questions for our manager or Finance Director as we discuss the residential commercial service fee? All right, seeing none. Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on R0722?
Price?
Yes.
Vilani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henin?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes.
Ms. Mitchell, would you please read item number five on tonight's agenda?
Resolution Number R822. Matter of approving a resolution of the Council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan, setting the charges for water and sewer services, effective July 1st, 2022.
Is there a motion to approve R0822?
So moved.
Mayor Protem Dean with support from Councilmember Vilani. Mr. Baumgartner?
That was really good.
We're having a blast.
That was good. Mr. Mayor, this item covers exactly what it sounds like, both the water that comes out of your faucet, as well as the water that goes down the drain. There's a cost to making sure both are ready to serve at any given moment, and we make sure that they do so in conjunction with various authorities. We work with the Southeast Oakland County Water Authority, as well as the Great Lakes Water Authority. And on the sewer side, we work with the Oakland County Water Resource Commissioner's Office. I mention those entities because they largely set the rates that we work with here, both on the water side and the sewer side. And then this year, thank you to some actions from the state. We also have to account for lead line service replacements and the work that's coming through Eagle as well. So all of those items, those very important services, go into creating the rate you see before you. We continue to have one of the lowest rates in the Saco footprint of the 14 communities. We typically are just above Bingham Farms as being the lowest, and they cheat a little bit, frankly, by not owning anything, so...
Shots fired, Bingham.
Yeah. We're the lowest city in SACRA because Bingham Farms is a village, so something we've been very proud of for a number of years, and we hope to continue many years in the future, all while providing a very high level of service to our residents.
And as was mentioned, this is largely a pass through to us from those. Mr. Finance Director, anything you'd like to add on the water side of things?
I will mention.
You can just stay there if you want.
I don't know if, if we were notified yet, but we did notice in section three, the dates there should be July 1, 2022 as opposed to July 1, 2021. So we corrected that, and I did send a corrected version to Victoria, so that will, that change will be made on this resolution, so. But yeah, we mostly passed through. Sewer was roughly four and a half percent increase, and the water is a four percent increase, and it will result in around four and a half percent increase to the average utility user, homeowner, resident, but as Matt mentioned, we're still, we're still on the lower end of average cost in the SACRA community, so. And that is something to be very proud of, especially living in a city that's on the higher end in the SACRA community, so it's, it's a good thing to do that. And you do provide with council's direction a tremendous amount of services utilizing your water and sewer resources. Relining of sewers, $400,000 in this budget, that's a lot of money to any community, but that's, you know, $300,000 plus on an annual basis is being done here every year, and that commitment is very important to the long range health of the system, and we continue to do that. And also, as Mr. Baumgarten mentioned, the lead line services, that is a mandate by the state which we are taking care of at our cost, and you know, that's always something you have to consider when you're setting rates, but we certainly are very conscious of the fact that we do maintain a healthy, I'll call, working capital. Since water and sewer is an enterprise fund, it doesn't have a fund balance, but it does have a retained earnings, but the majority of the retained earnings, roughly 16 million, are in the ground. They're, they're the system itself, so just to let people know, we do, are very conscious of your rates, and we do everything we can to keep them as low as possible, and I think we did that again this year.
Thank you, Mark. Any questions for our Finance Director or City Manager on water? All right. I think that was a great explanation, both Mark and Matt. I appreciate that. Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on R 0822?
Vilani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. Ms. Mitchell, would you please read item number six on tonight's agenda?
Resolution number R 922, matter of approving a resolution of the Council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan, adopting a budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2022 and ending June 30th, 2023.
Is there a motion to approve R 0922?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Price with support from Councilmember Baker. Mr. Baumgarten?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As I mentioned earlier, the City Council sat down and spent over five hours over two days going through the budget, item by item, and talking about the, the various reasons and the purposes and the goals that drive the investment of the city's resources into our own community. This budget resolution that you see before you outlines each of those, summarizes those conversations and outlines, fund by fund, how we plan to invest those dollars as well as the source of the revenues for which we will turn around and purchase all the wonderful things that, that make our city great. So first and foremost, I think most people's eyes are drawn to the tax rates. You'll notice that the tax rate for this year dropped yet again to 15.7752. This drop is largely due to the effect of the headly amendment to the Constitution on us. Each year where the city is successful and we gain value in our community greater than the rate of inflation, there's actually a sort of strange punishment built in to the system where we then have to drop our millage rates. And as we talked about for, for several hours, that effect of which has really brought the city's ability to keep the momentum it's had for the last couple of years to a much slower pace than, and then if, if left unchecked, would actually kind of grind us to a halt next year, unfortunately. So I know we talked about that and the implications of it. Many members of council had some great and constructive feedback for us that we put into the budget, but we are, we're in a situation where some actions need to change, and I don't foresee them happening as, from a structural level in the state of Michigan, but as we know, we've talked about may have to account for those here locally. So once again, local government is, is being called upon to save the day, so. Again, this budget resolution reflects those conversations, and you'll see that they go dollar for dollar, what we talked about during our budget work sessions.
Mr. Finance Director, now you may go.
Just a couple of comments. As Matt mentioned again, the process starts for us back in January. We put a lot of effort, all the directors put together, work on their own budgets. As you know, they present them to you in our budget work sessions. The process is never easy. It was a little easier in past years because, you know, our deficit was reducing a fund balance that was built up, quite honestly, for a number of years because those items weren't done at, at the level they, we liked them to be done. But as Matt mentioned, I like the word momentum. We, we had to put the brakes on momentum for this upcoming budget year, and we cut, our original draft budget was about a $3.1 million deficit, and we cut that down to $870,000 roughly deficit. But again, it's still a deficit, and it's going to reduce that fund balance down to the fiscally responsible level of fund balance policy that this body adopted late last year of 25%. And that's kind of the rainy day fund target. We certainly don't want to go below that, but we're at that point facing what really every community in this area is, has either faced or is going to face, and that's a headly rollback and headly override decision before the voters, because as Matt mentioned, we've reduced to a point where we can't, we can't operate, and we certainly can't keep the momentum of the capital equipment and projects that we've done over the past three years. We've been fiscally responsible, continue to be, but we're at that point where at some point in the very near future, we're going to have to inform the residents of where we're at and why we're here, and we will certainly do that with as much information as we can possibly give and show them that, you know, we're, we're up against it. We're facing a headly override at some point very soon, and, you know, we'll, we'll prevent all, present all the facts to everyone so that they can see, you know, what brought us here and, and how we get out of it.
And just to illustrate that point, can you talk a little bit about the last voter-approved millage and what that is actually now compared to what it was when it was voted on?
Yeah. We, there was a three mil that's been reduced to about 255, but the original general operating millage for the City of Berkeley was 10 mils. That's been rolled all the way back to 5.3747. And then the public safety millage, which was three mils when levied, is back to 1.612 mils. So same with sanitation. They were three, and they've been rolled back to 1612. I think by itself, headly is something that saves taxpayers, but we've talked about it for years. We've talked about it in Lansing. We tried to let them hear the, the model of financing for local government is broken, and we've been trying to get it fixed for years. There's not going to be any miraculous change. They say the same thing every time we bring this up, go to your voters and get a headly override to operate your city. So that's the help that we're going to ask for from our residents here, and like I say, we're, we're faced at. I live in Clausen. We just had a 3.7 headly override renew earlier this month, and, you know, it's, it's, it's never an easy decision to say, I want to pay more taxes. But when you look at what that does and what it, what it's done here and what it will continue to do, it's certainly something you have to consider and understand that we've been put in this situation not really by our own doing. It's, it's part of a double whammy, I'd call it, between headly override and proposal A, and it's just, it's impossible to sustain, and the avenue that we have is headly override. So that's where we'll be before too long.
Average approximate one mil, what, what does that revenue generate typically?
It's around $700,000. Our, we do have DDA capture for our millages as well, rolls it back slightly, but again, that, that's money that's captured and goes back into our downtown, which is a great thing. Again, a lot of communities in this area that have downtowns have very successful and, and productive DDAs as you do here. I think Mike's doing a tremendous job. I think you all agree. It's, it's all part of what makes this community great, and, you know, that's $700,000, sounds like a lot of money, doesn't go very far. So it's certainly something that, when we put it all together, we'll, we'll, we'll be very upfront and honest with all of that information.
Right. And so the combination of proposal A and the headly amendment have got us to the point that we were in, the point we were in back when we went to the voters years ago. Proposal A caps how much you can essentially grow. It's either tied to the rate of inflation or 5%, whichever is lower. We've been in a very low inflation environment over the last number of years. This year may be a little bit different, but the last number of years we haven't, so we were capped at that kind of growth. Combine that with headly rolling back to what it was initially, even though, and the reason I'm, I'm going through this is I talk to a lot of residents, and, and when I, especially during this budget cycle, the question, I'm sure my colleagues get it as well, well, look, housing values are great in Berkeley. People are buying houses. People want to be here. How is it possible that your budget is losing money? That's how our budget is losing money. It is, it, it has nothing to do with the way that we've typically been managing our budget cycles. We have a fund balance policy that we've stayed within. Our audits are consistently where we want them to be, but we don't have any control over proposal A and headly. And our only recourse is what the Finance Director mentioned, is to have another conversation with the voters to try to get those mills back up to where they were a long time ago. So we've had to cut nearly $3 million from this budget, even though we were in a, a very good economic position over the last number of years, very strong position. We don't have that control. That's, that's through the state constitution, and we can't just change it. And the communities around us have all, as, as was mentioned, are, have found themselves in similar position over the years, and they're going to continue to find themselves in that position if the law doesn't change. And as Finance Director alluded to, I don't see any sweeping changes coming to how municipalities are financed through the state. Colleagues, any additional comments, clarity?
Just to add, yeah, thank you again for, and I'll, I'll echo my colleagues' comments in prior items, to the, to the dedication and focus of the department directors and to, to the finance team and, and your staff and to administration for, for bringing such a robust and thoughtful budget to us and for making it very clear the necessity to, to have these conversations in the near future. And, and just to remind us all that we're not actually really seeking to pay a lot more in taxes, we're just trying to restore it back to what it used to be so that we could provide the kinds of services and, and quality infrastructure that our residents depend upon. So with that framing, it's just like, oh yeah, you know, we're just, we're just trying to get back to where we used to be, is, is still kind of sobering in its effect of understanding all of what happens to, to keep a community rolling, so. Those are the things we'll be covering in the future.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Thank you. I just want to make sure that all the residents know that that budget binder, what's in there is available on the city's website, obviously not in a binder, but you can download that, and you can see line by line where every dollar is going. So we are transparent, and if you have any questions about the budget, please feel free to contact Mr. Pollak or certainly one of us, but he would probably be the best place to go. So I just, we just wanted to make sure that everyone knows that that information is out there, and again, echoing the sentiments of my colleagues, the appreciation for the hard work that all the departments did, your department, Mark, and Lori, I mean, she puts that all together. And I think too, just the, I'm appreciative of the spirit in which this budget happened when, when all departments were asked to cut, they just did it. You know, there, I mean, there might have been grumbling somewhere, but, but they did it. They did what they needed to do to, to keep this viable and, and to keep us where, you know, we need to be. So thank you to everyone again.
Any additional comments?
I will, I will state one other thing we did discuss at the budget work sessions is ARP funds, which I know residents have been hearing about, the money from the government. You got all this free money. City of Berkeley got, will get a second tranche. They call them their two payments. First one was about $800,000 and, which is in the current year budget and is planned for government services, which is part of what they're allowing us to do. They did free it up. But I remember Councilmember Henan said, you know, we, we'd like to look at some possibility of reserving that money. Just so everybody knows, the $800,000 additional that's coming, that's in this budget too, and we still have an $800,000. We're not forgetting about that money. It's certainly money that we want to utilize with some of the losses that we had during COVID, but just so everybody knows, we don't have a bunch of, you know, even a one-year windfall coming. It's, it's in this budget. It's there, and we plan on using it wisely.
Thank you. Well, I will close the conversation just by telling everybody that that book that's been referenced and shown multiple times in the conversations that we've had, all the work, you know, that our directors put in, that our Finance Director and his team, Lori, certainly have done, this is our most important job, okay? Being good stewards of the residents' resources, the businesses, the tax dollars, and being able to leverage those in a way that provides the services, quality of life, that our residents not only desire but deserve, honestly. And we need to be able to continue to do that. We're a very desirable place, very safe. We have great schools. We've got a great downtown, community that's incredibly supportive, and we want to make sure that we're able to, to maintain that, and that's why we spend as much time as we do going through this budget and why we spent time trying to explain this evening what's coming down the road, because we see it, and we've seen it before, and we want to make sure that folks understand what we're looking at in the future. So, Mark, thank you, and your staff, and Lori, certainly for all the work you guys have done, all of the directors, and, and certainly the City Manager for everything that you do in your role to get this, to this point today. No, it's not as candy cane and rainbows as our last few budgets have been, but that's okay, and we'll continue to do what we need to do to provide those services to our residents. Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on R 0922?
Baker?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Vilani?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. Ms. Mitchell, would you please read item number seven on tonight's agenda?
Motion number M 4722, matter of authorizing the City Manager to sign the application for additional service credit purchase for John Beach approving the purchase of two years of generic additional service credit. The service credit purchase is allowed by the MAP contract agreement dated 7/1/2021 through 6/30/2024 and the MERS plan document for active members. The total cost calculated by MERS included on the application for additional service credit is $20,820, and the City of Berkeley's share of that cost is $16,509.
Is there a motion to approve M 4722?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Henan with support from Councilmember Vilani. Mr. Baumgarten?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As referenced in the motion, the MAP contract that we just recently settled opened up a three-year window in which some of our, all of our existing employees could mirror our merit system employees and purchase years through, of service through MERS, the Michigan Municipal Employee Retirement System. So many, if you remember, many of our DPW directors took advantage of this a couple months ago. Mr. Beach is also now joining them and taking advantage of this finite window that we have for our existing employees. Mr. Beach has been with us for a number of years at this point, and so he, it's gone through a similar calculation we've gone through with the other gentleman and came to the conclusion that this is worth asking the city to pursue. Again, we have allowed for this. MERS allows for this, and we have run the numbers several different times in several different ways. We do still believe this to be a beneficial, mutually beneficial option for both the employee as well as the city. We've both come out ahead on this, so it's a great deal for all entities involved, and our employees were very grateful that they were able to also do this like our merit system employees were as well. So happy to bring this forth to you this evening with the recommendation that, for council to consider approval.
Questions for Mr. Baumgarten? Again, these, as has been mentioned, this is something that we've seen a number of times recently and mutually beneficial to both the employee and mutually beneficial to both the employee and the city in the future, something that we have approved in the past. And if there are no other questions, I guess we'll see if we will approve this one as well. Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on M 4722?
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Hennan?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Vilani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. Ms. Mitchell, is it council member Gavin?
It is.
Well done, your honor.
Let me pay attention. All right. Council member Gavin?
Thank you, your honor. Going to keep it brief. The next EAC meeting will be June 16th at 6:30 PM in the second floor conference room of the Public Safety Building. This last one in May was canceled. And the next planning commission meeting will be May 24th at 7:00 PM here in council chambers. And then lastly, just a thank you so much to the Berkeley Days Committee and everyone who made last weekend possible. It was just so great to be out there as a community and very much needed, certainly given the last couple of years. So that's all I have. Thank you very much.
I have a feeling that will be a consistent theme. Council member Vilani?
Just a quick few updates from the chamber. Chamber chats are coming up this Friday at 8:30 to 9:30 at Pinstaration. There's no need to register, so please attend and you can connect with other business people in the Berkeley area. And if you are not already subscribing to the Berkeley local podcast, and you can find that wherever you get your podcasts from, please check that out. And the most recent episode features chamber president Tim Murad, who also has his own realty business and he's going to talk about volunteering within the city and what the real estate market is like right now. Also like to make a plug for the Berkeley Cares Food Pantry. If you go to their website, theberkleycaresfoodpantry.org, they have some donation days coming up, I believe this Friday, and they're in need of some non-perishables. So if you have the ability to donate to that great organization, they are in need.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Dean?
Thank you, your honor. The Parks and Recreation Department is having a senior picnic. It's scheduled for June 8th and it's free, but you have to call the Parks and Rec Department to register. The number there is 248-658-3470. And I just want to extend a big thank you to all the donors for the J.C. Park improvements. Excuse me. Everyone that contributed to that helped the Parks and Rec Department not only reach but exceed their goal of $50,000, which they got a matching grant from the MEDC for. So appreciate everyone who contributed and I'm excited, looking forward to the completion of these improvements. So we'll have yet another green space to enjoy. Thank you.
Thank you. Council member Baker?
Oh, that's me. Let's see. Happy, happy Monday, everybody. Hooray for the recent Berkeley Days and the Off to the Races event. That was fantastic weekend for, for the community and the school district. So that was awesome. The historical committee would like to remind everyone that coming up on May 29th, let's celebrate Berkeley's 90th anniversary as a city. And next year we'll be celebrating the 100th anniversary as a village. We became a village in '23 and then a city in '32. So that'll be really fun. The committee met on the May 10th at 7 o'clock and they're continuing their work on the next collectible mug. I know those are great items for collections and for, for just having a nice cup of cocoa in the, in the morning or evening. And they're also working on inventorying and cataloging the items and artifacts into some software packages, which will provide for greater visibility into what we have to share with the community. Visitors are always welcome. The museum is open Wednesdays from 10 to 1, Sundays from 2 to 4 and online at berkeleyhistory.com. The DDA Board of Directors met that very next day, Wednesday, May 11th. And thanks to all the volunteers who made the second Downtown Block Party a super fun time. It was held on May 1st at Flipside Records to, to create fanfare and, and, and wonderful success. And as was mentioned earlier, the next Downtown Block Party will be on June 26th, the Berkeley Pride. And we'll be talking about that more as we get closer. And of course, join us on, on Thursday, June 2nd for our next Ladies Night Out along Coolidge and 12 Mile from 5 o'clock until 9 o'clock. And some new businesses that have come into town recently, obviously include Little Lou's Hot Chicken and Flipside. And in addition, soon joining that esteemed group is Redux Market, R-E-D-U-X, Redux Market of Antiques. Casa Amado at the former Atomic Dog location, so for street tacos. Black Hop is looking strong at the, the former location of Sugar Kisses. That'll be a brew stillery, I think is the term that we had talked about, which is really awesome. And it's looking good for an Indian restaurant at the Old Ellie's location on the south side of Coolidge there. So that should be really fun as well. And finally, it was Angela Davis who once said, "In a racist society, it is not enough to be non-racist. We must be anti-racist." Now, as was mentioned earlier, Berkeley does have an uncomfortable past on this particular issue. And as we're seeing now, mass shootings are being inspired by lies and false conspiracies about debunked white replacement theories. The latest mass shooting, the second one this past weekend, is in Buffalo, New York, where 10 innocent Americans were shot and killed. The shooter intended to continue his rampage if he had not been stopped. And as we know, hatred and division is not American and we cannot tolerate this. In our agenda earlier, in the consent agenda, we, we passed with great joy proclamations of LGBTQIA+ and gun violence awareness. And so our city is taking an active stance in promoting and raising awareness around what we, what is going on around us and what we need to do. But as, as Ms. Davis stated, our future depends on each of us to actively speak out and promote love, understanding, compassion, and inclusion. So please stay safe, everybody, and hug somebody you love because you never know what that might do to help turn their minds around just a little bit. Thank you, your honor.
Thank you, council member Baker. Council member Price?
Yes, thank you, your honor. My communications tonight are very much focused on gratitude to our volunteers. This is a season in Berkeley when we have so many fantastic events and opportunities and it's, Berkeley Days is a great example. The volunteers that put that event together and made it happen, there were so many things offered for so many people. Running in the 5K was the highlight of it for me, but it was, it was well organized. It was well attended. It was a lot of fun and it was great to celebrate community. So thank you to the volunteers that did that. I also want to thank the residents who are volunteering their time to participate in the current stakeholder sessions about branding. There's, we need to work together as a community so that the new brand represents Berkeley as a whole. And I'm grateful for everyone who's doing that. And I want to thank the residents who submitted comments and showed up tonight, that these proclamations about National Gun Violence Awareness Day and proclaiming June 2022 as LGBTQIA+ month. This isn't just from the council. You showing up, you speaking up, you emailing us your thoughts really shows that, that this is reflective of the wishes of the entire community. So thank you for showing up and making your voices heard. That's all for me.
Thank you. Council member Hennan?
Yes, first on the tree board, the spring tree planting, they'll be adding 30 new trees in the easements and that's a result of one of the two grants that we received. They're also just following up on the tree preservation as part of the Cornwall Kenmore Project. And they'll have their last meeting before the summer hiatus here in council chambers on Monday, May 23rd. The zoning board of appeals heard two cases. In the first case, they approved a salon on Coolidge with no parking after the previous building owner sold his parking lot to a neighboring business. And in the second case, they approved changing the text on a non-conforming sign on Woodward. They'll have a case on, at least one case on June 13th to consider a larger sign than is allowed for the new Aqua Twice building at the former Farina's location. Then just one final thing, I think we need to take a look at our grading standards and how properties place soil to avoid causing flooding. What we have works really well for new builds and large remodels. It's turning out too strict for smaller sized projects and then even too lax in some minor cases. So I'd like us to consider at our next meeting at least a partial enforcement moratorium for smaller projects while we work to fine tune the ordinance to get it working and to balance protecting people from flooding while also encouraging development, you know, people's homes. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Baumgarten?
Thanks, Mayor. I would also like to thank Berkeley Days. The volunteers do a great job for sure. But I also like to thank our recreation department as well. They give up their parking lots, their buildings, their time, their energy, all to make sure that our, our volunteers have that much easier of a time pulling off one of our signature events of the year. So thank you to that staff. And I know they're happy to do it. They work behind the scenes diligently. But they sometimes get lost in the fanfare of thanking the volunteers themselves. So I want to make sure that their sacrifice and their time and effort is also lauded because it was a great time this weekend. It really was. I got to spend some time in the dunk tank on Sunday between 3:30 and till the rains blew in. And I will, I'm happy to report that the residents' accuracy in their throwing arm remains unblemished from years past. So those two years, they must've all practiced their accurate throwing because I spent a lot of time in the water, not a lot of time on the bench there. And then before I end it, I want to thank again, as said throughout this meeting, thank you to our finance department as well as our department directors. A lot, we ask our department directors to give up quite a bit this year. A budget is usually about what you want to do. Ours certainly took, spent some time in the, what can we, what can you survive not doing this year? What can you put off? What would you like to do in the future, just not right now? Unfortunately, that was a bigger part of our conversation than it normally is, but our department director stepped up. They offered suggestions. They tightened their belts. They sharpened their pencils, you know, picked, picked the analogy. They did it. But $3 million is not easy to cut from a, from about a $13 million budget, but they did it. Bigger departments gave more, smaller departments gave what they could. But thank you to all of them because they did it so as public servants and keeping their mission, vision, and values in mind. So thank you to them all. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Attorney?
Nothing this evening, Mr. Mayor.
I was gonna say, you've been pretty quiet this evening. Might as well.
Yeah.
Might as well keep it that way.
Probably a good thing when you don't hear much.
In general, that is a good thing. I too want to thank the Berkeley Days, you know, the association, not having an event for a couple of years. And, and I don't know if we have accurate statistics on how many folks attended, but it seemed incredibly well attended. Now, it was also like, you know, 90 degrees out both days, but until the rains held off on Sunday, which in itself is a win for Berkeley Days, which typically does not have that kind of weather. I unfortunately somehow missed the dunk tank this year, but I was in it the last time when it was about 50. This is probably not quite so bad. And while we are talking about Berkeley Days, it was not all sunshine. And I want to publicly congratulate the Moms and Dads Club on a very close, hard fought win last Thursday.
So close.
And, you know, while I was, was out of town unfortunately and missed the game, what the Dads Club and Moms Club doesn't actually know is that it actually worked out exactly how I planned it. You see, I don't know if you guys have younger siblings, but when you play games, I have a younger brother. And so when you play games with your little brother, if you always win, he doesn't come back and play anymore, right? He's not going to. Gets frustrated. So sometimes you let him score some runs, maybe even let him win a time or two just to make sure that he keeps playing. So we can't win every year. We won't have any opponents. So this year, we tanked a little bit just for our little brothers to be happy. And next year, we will put little bro right back in his place where he needs to be. I also want to congratulate Berkeley Education Foundation on their Off to the Races, again, the first one that was held in person in the last couple of years, just like Berkeley Days. Great event, raising money for the foundation. And I can report that I only embarrassed my wife once. Unfortunately, that time happens to be in a picture that we'll live on in posterity as I decided to ride a blow up horse. And she was not super excited about that, but it is what it is and it's, it's all out there. Although we're not seeing as many COVID-related deaths, which is great due to the vaccine proliferation, we are seeing a precipitous rise in cases though. And remember, those are just the reported cases. So that doesn't even take into consideration how many home tests, because they're a little bit more accessible, that folks are taking and not even, you know, sending in or going to get a PCR test to confirm. Please continue to be safe and responsible, especially as we move into the summer and trying to be outside a little bit more and not have to be inside as much. But it's certainly not gone. It has not gone away. And I know a lot of conversation is now that we're moving into this, you know, COVID not being, well, it certainly still is. And it's hitting a lot of people right now. And luckily, folks are able to, for the most part, get over that. But it still doesn't mean that we're back to just doing all those things that we did before. Please continue to stay safe. Wear masks when you can, wash your hands and just try to be smart. And lastly, it's been, it's been a few months maybe since I've gotten on my social media soapbox. But now is the time to hop back up there. It is incredibly frustrating when somebody feels like the best course of action is to run to social media and start generating a little mob mentality instead of having actual conversations. Especially when a lot of what is on social media is not necessarily true. Doesn't have to be. Say whatever you want on there. People think it's true. And what makes it even worse is when we have folks who are supposed to be role models in our community that choose the social media flame war over dialogue. And I'm going to let everybody on a little tip. Libeling city staff is the worst way to try to get your way. That's not going to work. We're certainly open to conversations. Not everybody is perfect. We all make mistakes. But let's have conversation instead of resorting to social media to try to get people riled up when the facts are not even clearly there. And with that, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by council member Vilani. Mayor Protem was able to get in there without any trouble. Mayor Protem Dean with support. Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll?
Hennan?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Vilani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. The May 16th, 2022 meeting of the 39th Council of the City of Berkeley is adjourned.